... flag of the United States of America. Two hundred and fifty-four states, one nation under our indivisible, undivisible elected justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
President Kushner.
President.
Counselor Bean.
President.
Counselor Boishman.
President.
Counselor Beazall.
President.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Donley.
Here.
Counselor Green.
President.
Counselor Joseph.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Counselor Tran.
Here.
Warrant for a special meeting of the city council. A special meeting of the city council will be held on Tuesday, September 5th, 2017, at 6:00 PM, Memorial Middle School Library. The agenda will consist of the following: recessed hearing, 09817, Vincent Poussetter II, city solicitor to amend Chapter 181, 356 of the Pittsburgh zoning code by inserting 181, 3561 regarding a structure that has been abandoned or not used for more than two years, will not require a special permit as outlined in the enclosed petition. Declare the hearing resumes, and at this point, I will refer over to our city solicitor, who will walk us through the progress that's taken place and the changes to the document that is before us this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and Counselors. Obviously, this has been a pending petition that's been before you, and I want to let everybody know that everybody in the city's zoning board, planning board, our director of planning, our principal planner, our new building commissioner, everyone's put a lot of thought and attention to it. Attorney Christine Tree in the back has put a number of hours into this issue, and obviously, Mayor Dina Tally, who's really driven us to try to find a good balance between rehabbing abandoned structures in the building, in our city, and making sure that we're not left with zoning problems in our effort to do so. So, we had circulated an eight-page document. I'm hoping that you're all able to maintain it over the break, and it provided comments, initially in black type, with the zoning board's comments in blue, planning board comments in red, and then law department comments in green. We did circulate that last time, and we had an opportunity to continue to review that document over the break. I met with the building commissioner and the director of planning, and as we went through the document, we decided that it is quite an ambitious endeavor, and we wanted to do something to simplify it. Specifically, what we wanted to do was removing, really from your consideration this evening, paragraphs five through paragraphs eight. Those paragraphs would do, sought to do a couple of things. One was to take us away from the special permit, which is what we currently require folks to do, and bring it down to a lesser standard for relief called "simply a permit." The other option that was in this area was to promote the position of a zoning administrator. There was not really a lot of appetite in the city, and in, I think, with some of the counselors, to make those moves, and I think that that's something that we can revisit in the future, and it's not necessary to have this petition go forward. So if I was to focus in on paragraphs one through four, where really the substantive issues are. Paragraph one introduces us to a concept of looking at our abandoned buildings in a three-tier approach. The first tier to be single-family homes and two-family homes. The second tier to be three-family structures and multifamily structures. And then the third tier to be commercial buildings. So, the petition that's before you, that we're having a special meeting on tonight, deals with that tier two, that three-family and multifamily structures, and that's what we're going to be speaking of. We're also, during council later tonight, going to be talking about single-family and two-family, and there's a proposal for relief on those as well. Regarding the relief, or the change that we're looking to make in the bylaw, if we focus our attention into paragraph four, what we'd like to do is we'd like to redefine what an abandoned or not-used structure is in the city of Pittsburgh for the purposes of making a zoning determination, not for building safety, not for any of those other considerations, not for fire safety, but for simply to make for zoning. Because if we give them zoning relief, it's going to encourage certain types of development, which will, in essence, give us a better construction product and a safer product for fire safety. If you look at the report on page two, paragraph four lays out, in essence, four factors that we would suggest that if a building project possesses, it would not be considered abandoned or not used, and not require a special zoning relief, would not require the special permit, but still would be overseen by the building department for safety and by the fire department for fire code compliance. In essence, what we're saying is if it was a legally pre-existing non-conforming use in a district that permits for residential use, and that there was a substantial rehabilitation to the project, that would implicate sprinkler systems, that would implicate a 50% rehabilitation of the premises, and that the parking was otherwise in conformity or substantially in compliance with the current bylaw, that those would not be abandoned or not used, therefore not require a special permit, and our building commissioner would be able to issue those folks, for those projects, a building permit. Hopefully, that'll get the most attractive projects moving as quickly as possible. The second component of the relief that we're looking to make is to allow the building commissioner to promote one of his ideas, which was a great idea, to establish a committee, which would not be a special permit or a permit-granting authority. It's unfortunate about the language. It would be a committee that would make a review for projects that fail to meet that first set of criteria that I just laid out for you. So you may have a project, for example, where we have, it's legally pre-existing non-conforming, it required, it met the requirement of being in a district that has residential use, but the parking wasn't right. So this committee could then take a look at those and determine if there was any reasonable alternatives or other stipulations that could be put onto that project, so that that project could also get approved, and your constituent wouldn't be held up going to a zoning board meeting that could stretch out the process for 30, 60, or even 90 days, or longer if there was an appeal. That committee, we made quite a bit of research in. I know some of the councils had some questions about the open-meeting law. It was helpful in this context. Is going to be subject to the open-meeting law. It's going to be noticed, and I spoke with the commissioner, because I began to be considering whether or not we should abandon that concept, but I was assured from our building commissioner that that was something that he has done in the past for other jurisdictions that he's worked in, and that it is not, in his words, "a bridge too far," that it's simple for them to, through his administrative staff, post that type of meeting, organize the committee, take the minutes, and hopefully facilitate some of your constituents' projects and get those to move forward. If we take those two steps, everything else will remain the same. The balance of the projects that we can't put through, those two different programs that we're trying to put forward, will go to the zoning board in the ordinary course, as they have been, for a special permit as a result of their abandonment or their not-used for two years. And that would be the conclusion. I think, so it would be my hope that we would review this report, that we would accept this report, except for paragraphs five through paragraph eight, and then I would set myself on the course, and with the help of Attorney Tree, obviously, to draft an ordinance.
Questions or comments from counselors? Counselor Beazall?
I guess the question is, in the past, when people come before us, they questioned whether or not the building was abandoned, saying, "Hey, I can bring you in this slip, this ticket saying that people paid." So, where, because I know, like, the utilities, they don't like to shut off the utilities to these buildings. Like, how are we finding out, or what is the criteria we're using to say that this has not been used for a certain length of time?
I think that it's got to be a case-by-case, and I'm going to let the commissioner answer this one. I think it's a case-by-case basis. I think you have to look at any evidence that can be produced to you, and then make an assessment. When you're operating the executive function, to a certain degree, you have to use your best discretion to make certain findings, and I think that if the building commissioner sees evidence and he makes a finding that it was, in fact, abandoned, then it does require this special procedure. But as far as specifically as to what he's doing, I would just refer to him. Counselor?
Okay. Yes, please.
It's, to make a finding of that kind, obviously, when you have ironclad sort of evidence of non-use, lack of water, lack of, you know, electricity, it's pretty clear that over a two-year period, the building was not necessarily used, unless you had some purpose for the building that didn't require these things. The harder determinations that get made are where not all of that clear evidence is available, and then, you know, there's a certain responsibility of the property owner to provide evidence that would be compelling that the building was used. If it was an apartment building, you know, leases are, you know, good evidence, or it could be anything, but generally speaking, we start looking for a likelihood of whether or not it's more likely that it was not used in two years than was used, and conditional walkthrough could be evidence.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Green?
My only question is, do we, as a city, do we not have a clearly defined definition of an abandoned property?
No.
For everybody, a uniform definition?
We do not, we have a definition that is very bland. It doesn't specify, this is what abandoned means, so...
Are, do we have the ability, as a city and under your commission, to define what that means, so that people, right away, when they buy a property that has not been in use, that they know that this property has not been in use, and that it's going to be under review, either by zoning or under you, to see if it meets the definitions of moving forward in a project?
I suppose definition, more, you know, tighter definitions could be created that would define it, but the tighter the definition, the more limiting it becomes, because a building that maybe is, would seem obviously abandoned, now you're restricted to whatever definition you put into your bylaw. So leaving it broad allows people to come up with creative evidence, like leases, or photographic evidence, or some other document that proves that the building was inhabited. It would preclude those things, in a sense, too. So having it be not very specific allows for some flexibility that could benefit people.
Solicitor Pousteri?
Can I just follow up on that answer? So, this is what you're doing tonight. Massachusetts general law says that abandoned or not-used structures can lose their grandfathered rights, and if, and this city has previously decided to do that, but it also further provides that we can define exactly what that is. So what I'm asking you to do is to pass an ordinance that says, under this Section 4A, if a building and a project meets these requirements, that it will not be considered abandoned for the purposes of going to get a special permit, and under 4B, if the building or a project meets the approval of this committee that you would be establishing, that it would not be deemed to be abandoned. It's actually a very odd statute that gives us such flexibility, too. It uses the terms "define" and "regulate."
So, under this new ordinance that we create, would they still be subject to grandfathering, which would be a benefit to them, or there would be no grandfathering as a benefit to them?
You will be creating two categories here that will be able to maintain their grandfathering, even if we had compelling evidence that they were abandoned or not used for two years, provided that the building department is satisfied that we have a good and viable project moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Dina Tally?
Thank you. So this, the letter that was submitted, where it says, "The undersigned petition, your honorable body," there are five points here that you wrote. Is the language going to be exactly what this says? Understanding you said earlier that one through four will be kept, five through eight will be stricken, but is this verbiage that you supplied to us, is that the verbiage still? A structure that has been abandoned or not, so on and so forth, and then you signed it underneath?
No.
Okay.
This has gone through a number, we went to the zoning board, they put us, gave us some input.
Right.
Planning board gave us some input. I think our building commissioner, who gave us some input to even view this whole problem into a three-tier system. What it looks like now is the...
One through four.
Yeah, but it's the document dated July 13th, 2017.
Yes. So that was your initial movement on this, and then, and then, one through eight below it, those eight pages, was the comments after it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So one through four is what we're zeroing in on, making codified. Five through eight, not right now, maybe not ever?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's one through four on the document dated July 13th.
Yes. So the reason why I intend to support the change is, I believe there's been a misconception out there that if this were to go through, people who purchase properties or seek permits for, or seek to do work at these properties that have been not used for more than two years, they will have free rein to do whatever they want. Because I think the misconception in the public and in this room at some points has been, if there's no special permit process, the property owner, or new property owner, will have free rein to do whatever he or she wants without subject to city review. That's why the special permit is in place, to ensure that doesn't happen. That, not saying that that's what I believe it is, that's been the misconception out there, in that if we do this, we are not giving people a blank check to do whatever it is they wish to do with these structures. We're defining a process that hasn't been defined, and we are trying to make the more desirable projects, based on a case-by-case basis, go forward in a more swifter fashion, but everything that takes place in this regard still has to go through the proper legal authorities for inspectional services, fire services, the whole nine yards. So what I've been trying to communicate to my constituents when they read this is, their first inclination is to say, "No special permit means these people can get away with anything." That's not the case. They still have to go through the permitting process. If we do not deem a structure to be grandfather, or we deem it that it was abandoned for more than two years, but yet we're going to let it go on that front, but they still have to pull all the necessary permits, they still have to go through all the necessary channels, just like someone who's building a brand-new home would have to do. So it's not as if they're going to fix up these structures in a non-conformance fashion. This is to streamline in what I consider to be a faulty process that is vague in general. This provides more definition to this process. It adds tiers to this process, so that there is an assessment done on a case-by-case basis, but no matter what takes place, all necessary occupancy permits and inspections have to take place, no matter what. So I just want to make that crystal clear, that that is the case here. We are not absolving our legal responsibility for these older structures, where they can just do whatever they'd like, free from the city's purview. They still have to go through a rigorous process. It's just in these specific cases, it doesn't have to be drawn out for months and months, just for them to get clearance to start working on the job. And that's been one of the biggest hang-ups with this, is people are waiting months and months and months, just to get the council or the zoning board to give them clearance to do what they want to do, and in some cases, the zoning board or the city council imposes its own restrictions on them, be above and beyond what I would consider to be necessary. And that's why I think the process as it was, was too onerous, vague, and lengthy. So I, I like the fact that this has been thoroughly vetted by two commissions, the attorney's office, and clearly, this has not been done in a vacuum. This has been going on now for several months. So I'm glad to see that there's some fruition to this, and I will support the language as written for one through four. When you present the language, Mr. Solicitor, I will support the petition and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Joseph?
Did, did something change two years ago on our definition for abandoned property?
Mr. Solicitor?
No, but Attorney Tree pointed out to me that we started a registry for abandoned buildings in the city. So I think our focus changed. So the definition did not change, but the application of what we're doing, I think you have the nice committee, and you have those efforts to identify those buildings that have been abandoned.
Because there's indication that other cities do not have a stringent requirement, but isn't it a state requirement, isn't this more of a state requirement than a city requirement?
It's, Chapter 48 permits cities or towns to regulate or define what to do with abandoned and not-used properties. So what they're saying is, if you have a property that didn't comply with zoning when zoning was passed, it's now a pre-existing non-conforming, what are we going to do if it gets abandoned? For two years, for three years, for 10 years? Most cities and towns, and we had the stat when we were last with you, I don't have it off the top of my head, but the overwhelming majority of cities and towns say that those properties lose their grandfathered rights. And so does the Pittsburgh. We are in the greater majority there. So, I hope I'm answering your question. But this is going to do is to take two certain types of projects and remove them from that abandoned property definition. When you say, "Other cities and towns aren't doing this," we took a look at Leominster's ordinance. So Leominster can have, you have two types of things when you're dealing with properties from zoning. You have the structure, and then you have the use, okay? So in Leominster, the only thing that can be abandoned is the right to use a property. So if I own a piece of property, and it's in a residential zone, but I've been using it as a local grocery store, and I've been doing that ever since before the zoning changed, and then I stop using it, I can no longer use that as a grocery store. But the building itself, it was otherwise non-conforming, maybe the front yard setback wasn't correct, I don't lose the right to use the building. The building then can be put to whatever the appropriate zoned use is, it's just that I can't use it as a grocery store.
Okay. If I, if I had a piece, if I had a three-family home, and it was on a conforming piece of property, and I sold it to you today, wouldn't you still be required to make sure that it had all the, met all of the fire code and current building codes, that a non-conforming, would I be able to just move into that house without doing anything if that didn't conform to the current building and fire codes?
Ninety-five percent of all conveyances are going to require what we refer to as a smoke certificate, but there will have to be, inspectional services of our fire department will go and view the building and determine that it's compliant with the fire code. So that might be more than a smoke certificate. It might be emergency lighting, it could be sprinkler system.
Right.
So, if you were to sell it to me, ninety percent of those cases, really, we're talking about financed purchases, that the banks will require that type of inspection and that type of documentation.
But not necessarily building codes?
Not necessarily so. If I pull a building permit, if I am, if we go downtown and I pull a permit and say, "I'm going to rehab the first floor," well, then that starts that process, and then Lieutenant Jordan then, or his designee, makes that inspection, and that process starts from the fire perspective as well.
So if I have a, if I have a three-family or multifamily on a piece of property that conforms, and I just, and it wasn't abandoned, I don't have to do, I don't have to have any parking, I don't have to have any, I don't have to be up to building code, I don't have to have an electrical inspection, you're taking it on...
Right. So if it conformed, your parking would probably then conform?
You don't know, though.
Right. But if you had a, if you had a building that was pre-existing and non-conforming, and it was in use...
No, pre-existing conforming.
Conforming. So it, it had all the right setbacks...
Right.
And it was an appropriate use at the time, and you sold it to me, and I kept using it as a three-family, the city would not have to be involved in that transaction.
So you could be out of building code, you could be out, you wouldn't, you can't be out of fire code. I mean, you have to have a fire inspection when you sell a property. I would think that that, if sprinklers were required, whether you're conforming or non-conforming, you would go through the same inspection process for that. It's just the building code that you would not, you wouldn't have to have all the right railings, and you wouldn't have to have all of the right parking, and you wouldn't have to have all of the right, all the other stuff, if you were on a piece of property that was conforming, just because of the lot size.
Okay. So the building code, you would not necessarily, unless someone made an application, but the, but housing, like a three-family housing, habitability might require a certain type of railing, and if your tenants did complain to the Board of Health, the Board of Health Inspection Services would go out there. I think the commissioner may be able to answer this part.
Mr. Commissioner?
So think of it this way, there's, there's sort of a maintenance code that the fire department has, a lot of, and the building department has a little bit of maintenance code, and the health department has a lot. And so anytime you're even using a building, at any time, that a lot of the state sanitary code is applicable to your building, and many of the fire codes are applicable to your buildings, and a handful of building codes are. You always need to meet those. Fire department has some upon the sale and transfer. Building department has, any time, but only a very limited amount of codes that apply to you. If you come in for a building permit, then we have a whole nother level of permit, of requirements that you need to satisfy, depending on the level of work. The new bylaw that's being proposed, in order to get the sort of fast-track for your project that you might be looking for, you are voluntarily committing to doing a high level of upgrades to the building, and that will trigger a lot of safety requirements being applied to your building, which I think is a good thing.
So I'm just, my concern is that we're making somebody jump through hoops, that we're not making everybody jump through, okay? Are we, this whole thing about 50% rehab to a building, is that just an arbitrary number that, if, if somebody wants to move into a building that doesn't have, that still has horsehair plaster and roofs and ceilings that are looking lousy, and, you know, and they just want to, they have a structure, why are we making them...
Well, this isn't for the one and two families, where you're usually seeing the owner living in the building. These are for apartment buildings. That's what we're discussing right now, and those buildings were often not up to really great codes when they were built, often with knob and tree wiring and other things. This is our way to get those, those issues addressed.
And, and it's not a requirement that you need to spend fifty, above 50% on rehab, and that's why we have the, the piece in here that allows for the committee to vote on whether or not it's meeting applicable health and safety code, and basically, if we're looking at a reasonable substitute. So I think it allows for some sense of discretion. So it's not just necessarily a hard and fast rule, but it's, it's this committee determining that what they're doing is not, you know, adding to the pre-existing non-conforming nature of the building, or presenting any additional harms that might come into conflict with, with the tenants of that property in the future.
And you can also ask to go for a special permit if you want, and just bypass the process altogether. If you feel like my building's already in wonderful shape, why am I having to go through this? Go to the ZBA, get a special permit, and then you don't need to.
Okay. So the ZBA is still an alternative if you don't want to go through the other committee?
Right. That's Section 9 at the end there.
Because I just, I just, again, I feel circumventing committees by making committees. It's by, the zoning board has teeth, okay? They have, they, they're able to do a cease and desist, they're able to stop your project. Well, this committee, if, if you don't follow all of their rules, and you, and you, you know, is there, are they going to have the same teeth that a zoning board or a planning board does when it comes to not doing what they tell you to do for your conditions? And they say, "Ah, I got 90% of them, I'm good, thanks, thanks a lot, guys, I'm moving in tomorrow," and then what do you, what's our recourse as a city?
Two, if I can respond?
Mr. Solicitor?
The, just on the first issue of the 50%, that was, that was not arbitrary, that was a number that we arrived at after we consulted with Lieutenant Jordan and Chief Roy at the fire department. That implicates the sprinkler systems.
Okay.
That, that, and it's, it's not so much a teeth perspective with these two options, it is a encouragement, it's a carrot.
Right.
Say, "Please, let's get a project that works this way." And the consequence as a result of failure to comply, so if I filed a notice of intent with the building commissioner, and I had a certain lot of land, and I showed him a structure that I was going to build, and that would otherwise conform, would meet all those setback requirements and provide an appropriate amount of parking, he would issue me a building permit for my project. If I then turned around and built a, built a building that did not conform, then I would get a cease and desist order from the building department, and I would envision, this would be the exact same process. If I came in and I showed that I complied with Section 4 in the, in the report, Section 4A, or in the report, Section 4B, with my, and I had a notice of intent, and my project...
my project was supposed to happen in a certain way, and then through the inspection services that our city provides, we determined that that's not happening, I would expect that their building permit would be null and void at that point in time, and they would need to obtain zoning relief.
So I like the process, I like that we're moving forward and we're taking some of the hoops out of it for the people that want to just buy an abandoned house, fix it up and make Pittsburgh that much better, put it on the tax rolls. It's just the whole, are we creating another process just to do that, or can we just say, you comply with these things, do it, if you don't, go to the ZBA? So rather than have another committee, I guess I'm hung up a little bit on another committee, and I do like the fact that, I guess, I guess these people in the Board of Health and in the building and in the fire should always be available to advise an owner with a project without having, and encourage them to do the right thing without having a board that they would have to sit down to and meet their conditions, because we've already laid out their conditions, and if they don't meet them, I guess then it's something that the ZBA, it kind of should go back to the ZBA. That's just my opinion.
Counselor Boishman.
My question to you is, I buy his multifamily and it's conforming. Now, I didn't know about this one. I decide to get my first floor because I'm going to live there, because I want it different. You mean to tell me that you can come back and tell me that I have to put sprinkler system throughout the building?
Throw the zoning book away for a second. If you're just talking about building code, yeah, you can, you would have to put sprinklers in if the conditions were right.
If the, but, but I just bought his property with the conditions that I get the smoke detectives in there, I get, I don't even think about the emergency lighting, because I'm told differently on, you can put them in, you don't have to, I don't know if there's a zoning here, but you don't have to, they would like you to put them in, but you don't really have to, because in Leominster, my friend put them in, and he didn't have to because the city came back, said, you didn't, we didn't, we can't make you put them in. That's my friend. But my question to you, I'm getting my first floor, because I want to put everything brand-new, and I want it a different style. So I'm doing more than fifty percent construction on the first floor. Can you come back as the owner of a three-family or a four-family and tell me, no, you got to put, you have to put a sprinkler system throughout the house?
There are conditions where you have to do that to be building code compliant, and that's not a city ordinance, that's the state code. Yeah, there's requirements. When you start renovating a existing building, there is a whole book on what triggers certain requirements, and if you get to fifty percent of the building getting renovated, then at that point, there's a level of additional safety requirements that you would have to meet.
But if you got a...
Counselor? I just want to make sure we avoid going down the rabbit hole of going down, you know, state compliance and...
All right, state compliance, all right. Then my second question to the city solicitor, and maybe you people. I'm reading the article on page three about parking 181.512, and you're talking about eight hundred feet with our on-street park. Now, which use, because it came in front of the zoning, so which use Clinton Street? The guy wants to, he had enough parking for five cars. Now, you get on-street parking to the city, on-street parking, and then you get off-street parking, but we get on-street parking in some of the areas here in our city, and the only time we have to move our cars in the wintertime is when we have a major snowstorm in the city, quote me if I'm not right, picks out different location where you can go and park your cars, St. Joseph's Church, Park Hill Plaza, Park Hill Park, whatever you want to park, you can do that. My question to you, we already, we already turned people away on this parking. We already told people, that lady I told you about, that first zoning board meeting I went to, and I felt bad for the lady on Cedar Street, and the zoning boards stuck to their guns, and they said, you don't have enough parking for three-family, you got two parking areas. So we spent seventy thousand dollars.
Counselor Boishman? It seems like you're leaning towards a question, do you have a specific question?
I am leaning towards a question, but I'm trying to explain to you the aftermath, because we're going to pass this. And my question to you is, what happens if we're putting in residential parking, and these three families, these three and four families that we say no to has residential parking? Now you got a three-family, we just told him that he can't put it in, we can't allow it, but we got residential parking on the street. So are we going to have boat, we're going to have residential parking, or we're not going to have residential parking in areas where there's multifamilies?
Commissioner Barbador, can you speak to the parking discretion?
Yeah, if you can't comply with the Tier Two requirements for parking, you can always go to the ZBA, and they can grant you a special permit so that you can utilize the off-street parking that you have available. But that's a discretion that's left to the ZBA.
Yeah, but it says here, eight hundred feet.
So that's off-street parking that you can satisfy on another parcel.
Oh.
And that's within the existing bylaws right now?
That's consistent with it, yeah.
All right, all right.
Counselor Donnelly?
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. And to answer the Counselor Joseph, I think the word streamlining is what we're trying to do, especially for the one and twos, and that's what we're addressing. So my thing is, the zoning in this changes here, is to stop mediocrity in Pittsburgh. And I don't think there are any other communities in the area that are faced with the same problems that Pittsburgh is. The number of empty abandoned buildings for a long period of time is, it's unbelievable. And nobody, nobody has ever seen any kind of a real estate situation that we have right now. It's never happened before. One thing I think that we, this information and these standards will do, it increases quality. And by increasing quality, we're also increasing value, as we increase value to the individual, to the neighborhood, and to the city. Many years ago, we had a no parking, oh, winter, winter parking ban, and we allowed winter parking. When you have a house, whether it's a one-family, or five, or 10, or 20, and you have enough parking, you pay taxes on the value that that building has with all of its assets. When you have a building that doesn't have adequate parking, and we allow on-street parking, everybody that has the more valuable building is paying taxes on something that is required, and then we let people use on-street parking. So the people that pay more taxes and provide more amenities are subsidizing the people that don't. I just don't think that that's fair. Now, that's my opinion, but why should one person provide all the amenities and pay higher taxes, and a person that provides fewer amenities pays less taxes and gets away with it? So I just looked at the distance, and I could tell you, back in the seventies, I participated, a friend of a friend wanted to rent some parking so he could go in front of the zoning board and get additional apartments, and I believe he already put the apartments in, and I went along with it. He never used my parking, but in the condition, it was there. It's just another thing for the building department, or the police department, or some other department, puts the responsibility on everybody else except for the individual that owned the property. And I don't think that's right to have to put the responsibility on the city department or anybody else. So again, we are now, the people that have the most amenities pay the higher taxes, people provide the least pay lower taxes, we're subsidizing them. So I question, in our parking plan, when people say we don't have parking on Main Street, in the parking plan that John Edwards put out, he said Pittsburgh does not have a parking problem, it has a walking problem, the downtown area in particular. But I did the numbers, I mean, eight hundred feet is between a quarter and an eighth and a quarter, it's a little less than a quarter mile. If people won't walk a few hundred feet to shop, I mean, you're going, we're going to allow them to go eight hundred feet to find a parking spot? I've been in the business for forty-five years, and people want to park in front of the door as often as they can. The one other thing, and I don't know how it's addressed here, is the parking requirements, if you have a one-bedroom or a number of one-bedrooms, and you have a five-bedroom, our zoning is the same, you want two parking spots each. Now, I've got people that don't have cars, single people might have one car, couples have two, five, you know, with a number of bedrooms, I just don't understand, our zoning, I've participated in it for many years, it's never been changed. So if you have a one-bedroom apartment or a number of one-bedroom apartments, and you have a number of twos or threes, the parking requirement's the same. I'm sure that it could be addressed at a zoning hearing or planning board in some cases, but I think these are things, but, I mean, I support this because I think it's streamlining it, it's better, and I think there might be a little confusion about the people going in front of that, we'll say, committee. That's streamlining. If you don't like their recommendation, then you can go, but it's streamlining it. Everything that the, that group of people, those investors that were here telling us about their problem, the streamlining would have just, the commissioner would have told them, this is what you have to do, they would do it, they could sell, instead of waiting three months to get a hearing, because we required the hearing, there was no streamlined process. So I support it, thank you.
And if I could just respond to that and your concerns, Counselor Joseph, when we had a meeting to discuss between Counselor Prusitari and myself and Mark, to discuss this exact question, were we in effect trying to simplify and streamline a process, and in doing so, creating more hoops and more complexity? And frankly, that's why we got rid of the six through eight, the pieces pertaining to the zoning administrator and the permit as opposed to a special permit, because it started to get a little bit too complex and a little bit too convoluted. And we are considering doing the same with the committee itself, but I think the one piece that is missing here, that you might be able to touch on a bit, is this is actually not something we brought out of thin air, but something that you had worked at Oak Bluffs in your previous community, had worked in such a community, and found it to be something that was streamlining and expediting a process that could take months, you know? So if you want to talk on that.
Yeah, I think that one of the large benefits to doing it is that when you're, when you're holding a public meeting versus a public hearing, you're shaving two months off the timeframe. So, but the body that's put together is there just to be, to verify compliance with the ordinance, which is very different from what a special permit is, where they're verifying not necessarily compliance specifically with the ordinance, but how will it affect the neighborhood? So this allows us, we've defined how we want to let certain properties move forward because we don't think it will be so detrimental, and we're going to move through with a meeting every maybe two weeks versus, or maybe three weeks versus once a month, and there is no public notice requirements, which adds almost thirty days, and then there's no appeal period, which adds twenty days. So this is a way to provide, the ones that are clearly more beneficial to the neighborhood because it's closer in conformance with the bylaw, we can move them rapidly, but there is going to be a body to check. And the meetings can be held with as little as forty-eight hours' notice. If someone says, I really need to have a meeting, we could say, wow, we'll move heaven and earth to get you in, and three business days later, we could have that meeting.
Counselor Gina Tally?
The committee we're talking about, is there been, is it going to be codified who's on that committee, or is that going to be, is it just of city officials?
Mr. Barbador, I believe that's at your discretion.
It is going to be mostly appointed employees of the town, meaning representative from the fire department, the health department, the building department, and probably the zoning board of appeals will have a member on it to make sure that we're substantially in conformance with...
So this committee is kind of a filter for the zoning board in some cases?
Right.
Where if this select committee determines the course of action that this person needs to take, that would invariably involve zoning board of appeals, that would be the recommendation to this individual, and they'd have to go through that process. But this is a filter in that there are many cases, they don't probably have to go before them, so it would lessen their backlog and speed up the process. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, the zoning board of appeals meetings, do they not go past midnight?
Sometimes.
Yes.
So I hate to think of residents who get there at six o'clock, and they're there for seven hours. I've seen it before, I knew the answer, I just wanted the public to understand, these meetings are held once a month, you're lucky if you get on the agenda, which could take several months, you're paying three hundred dollars to see them, and then you sit in there for six, seven hours. And now, you know you're at the back end of the meeting, if you're a resident who's never been before the zoning board, you don't know if you should go right when the meeting starts, an hour later? Some people wait six or seven hours to be heard. So this committee, in my opinion, is a necessity. I believe the committee is a compromise in that, that other language in this document that talked about an administrator for the zoning board, this kind of relinquishes that need and has city officials who are subject matter experts filtering these requests through for the zoning board to lessen their workload and to make it quicker for the residents, they have to wait seven hours or three months at a time. So I didn't have those same concerns when it was brought up. It makes perfect sense to me because that would be a whole nother issue in terms of lessening the backlog on zoning. It's insane how long people have to wait, and it's getting worse. So, thank you.
Counselor Bezel?
Just a comment that if the committee is going to be made up of those people, you have all the departments now uniformed on this one property with this one person, and once that meeting is done, pretty much have laid out a plan as to what this person needs to do, and I think that's an excellent, excellent idea, so.
I'll just add, you know, I think I'm, I will be voting in favor of this petition. I think ultimately strikes balance between both upholding the public safety standards that we've come to expect and need as a city, but also promoting both development and a business-friendly attitude in this city that hopefully allows, you know, developers to move forward and help us clean up neighborhoods, and hopefully, instead of making them adversaries in this process, makes them allies and allows us to work better with them to improve our neighborhoods in a quicker fashion. That said, I also realize the amount of time and effort that went into this, and I just wanted to thank those who didn't speak tonight, who were integral to the process. So Paula Karen, our Chair of the Planning Board, Mike Hurley, a member of the Planning Board as well, and Anthony Zarella, who served on the zoning board. Thank you to you and every other countless staff member who worked on this before it actually hit council. That said...
Mike O'Hara.
Yes, I meant, oh, and Mike O'Hara, thank you. That said, do we have anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Do we have anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. The matter is now before the council.
Make a motion to approve, second.
I have a motion and second to approve 09817, speaking to the motion. All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, we adjourn, thank you, Counselors.